I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And we'll start with attendance, please. Clerks?
Mayor Zabian.
Present.
Councilor Janic.
Here.
Councilor McLean.
Here.
Councilor Remy.
Here.
Councilor Whedon.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Francis.
Here.
Councilor Bob Morton.
Present.
Councilor Leary Pinch.
Present.
Councilor Paul Morton.
Present.
Councilor Bonnie Smith.
Here.
Councilor Ivy.
Present.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. We'll go right on to number three, approval of the agenda, including any additions or deletions. Is there any additions or deletions? Mayor?
Just one chair. If council would give me some leniency to add an item under in camera. Land contractual negotiation, MGA 222A. I have information to share at that point, but just something that popped up this morning and bring before council if council will give me some leeway on it.
Okay, we will need to put that to a vote. However, I will just see if there's anything else. And if we do add it, we will add it to 13D contractual in camera. Seeing no other lights, so I'm going to look for approval of the agenda, including the addition for in camera. So moved. Oh, you want to, okay, voted on first? Okay, we'll vote on the in camera item first, sorry about that. Deanna, do you want to pull that up, please? So we will add the in camera to 13D, so I'll look for a vote, approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilor Paul Morton, seconded by Councilor Leary Pinch. Do you want to put that to a vote as well? Clerk Snare, please. Motion passed. Is there any questions on the dashboard items that have been submitted?
Through you, Chair. There was just one that's been on there for a while for the municipal complex. And I just thought where we're coming up to budgets or whatever stuff to look at a rough Class D estimate for a new build for the complex. And then there's also one for staff to bring back a report on costing for the asbestos abutment. I'm just curious where those are.
With all our, we have Acting CAO, Kio here. Maybe the mayor may have something on that.
Yeah, I've been speaking to CAO on that and I believe he was to bring back something in the very near future on trying to bring it to resolution with information to council, so.
Okay. No other questions on the dashboard? Okay, looking for anyone with to click, declare conflict of interest this evening. Seeing none. We'll go on to announcements. West Hans Regional Municipality is in McMackee, the ancestral and unceded territory of the McMack people. This land is governed by the Treaties of Peace and Friendship signed in 1726. West Hans Regional Municipality recognizes we are all treaty people and have responsibility to this land and each other. West Hans Regional Municipality also recognizes African Nova Scotians are a distinct people whose history, legacies, and contributions have enriched that part of McMackee known as Nova Scotia for over 400 years. As well, just this council and I as chair are committed to ensuring this meeting and its participants conduct themselves in a respectful and professional manner as outlined in the municipality's municipal code of conduct. Meeting presenters, staff, and the public are expected to conduct themselves in an equally respectful manner at all times the meeting is being conducted. I thank you all in advance for your commitment to these important meeting principles. Is there any other? Mayor Zabian?
Yep, if I may, Chair, just the Canadian National Broom Ball Championships kicked off today. You'll see multiple vehicles at the sports complex, so get out, get some games in. It's fun competition and they're great people. The, I think, 36 teams, 700 athletes. It's quite large. And in association with that, they had their Hall of Fame inductees last night in Brooklyn. And I believe one of the inductees was a West Hanser, Adam Sexton. So congratulations, Adam, true broom ball individual inside and out. And he was pretty proud last night to be inducted, so it's a great day for him.
Yeah, congratulations to Adam. He's been involved for many, many years, so that's great. Councilor Scott McLean?
Yeah, I just want to put it out there. I had the pleasure to attend the River View Skating Club Grand Finale, the Disney Stairs, last Friday evening at 6 o'clock at the Brooklyn Rink. And what an exciting time. And I just want to throw a big shout out to all the volunteers, the coaches, young and old, and all the parents that put that together because it took a lot of work and it was very well received.
Excellent. Counselor Remy.
Just a quick little note that Sweets Corner Hall is holding an Easter egg hunt this weekend on Saturday from 10 till noon.
Okay, that's a great. Counselor Paul Whedon, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that this weekend there's an auction at the Ardois Hall. It's in support of Ardois Mechanical. And if anyone wants to go, it's a two-day event. You can do your pre-sale viewing on Saturday and Sunday, although you don't have to be there on Sunday, you can make your bid at any time. So that's this weekend at Ardois Mechanical fundraiser. And also the Ellis House Breakfast that we had March 29th for support of the Scott family. Happy to know that we raised $1,800 for them, so thanks to everybody that attended.
Job well done. Counselor McLean, did you have anything else?
No, sorry.
And Counselor Remy, can you just put your mic up? I can't see with the lap. Perfect, thank you, I don't want to miss anyone. Counselor Larry Pinch?
So I just wanted to mention that the Southwest Hans Fire Breakfast resume this Saturday from 8 to 10 AM for the season, so looking forward to a good crowd and the beans are the best.
Perfect, that's great. Great announcements. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move along. Approval of the previous meeting minutes, 2025-03-11, committee of the whole minutes. I'll move. Moved by Counselor Larry Pinch. Second. Seconded by Counselor Bonnie Smith. No more questions? Clerk Snare, can we put that up to a vote, please? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Moving right along, we have one presentation tonight at Station Food Hub, so I would like to invite Rebecca up. Hi Rebecca, so you can turn the mic on and if your presentation, I think Deanna's gonna work for us?
Is it on? It's on. Okay. So I checked the last time that Heather and I were here was April 10th, 2019, so almost exactly six years ago. So there's been a lot of changes, a lot of things have happened. Heather left the company in January of this year, so she's moved on to different things. So it's just myself and our seven staff that we have up there, but there's a presentation I can, we can get that started. There's a quick little video that I wanted to show everyone first and then we can get into the presentation. And thank you, Counselor Francis, I guess, to invite me here tonight to speak.
We're looking forward to it. Thanks Rebecca. Just having a little bit of technical difficulty to get this up and running, but we'll be there.
Councillor Bob Morton.
Present.
Councillor Larry Pinch.
Present.
Councillor Paul Morton.
Present.
Councillor John Smith.
Present.
Councillor Bonnie Smith here. Councillor Ivy.
Present.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. Uh, we'll go right on to number three, approval of the agenda, including any additions or deletions. Is there any additions or deletions? Mayor?
Uh, just one chair. Um, if council would give me some leniency to add an item under in camera. Uh, land contractual negotiation, uh, MJ twenty-two-two A. Um, I have information to share at that point, but, uh, um, just something that popped it popped up this morning and, uh, uh, bring before council if council will give me some leeway on it.
Okay, we will need to put that to a vote. However, I will just see if there's anything else. And if we do add it, we will add it to thirteen D contractual in camera. Seeing no other lights, so I'm gonna look for approval of the agenda, including the addition for in camera.
So moved.
Oh, you wanna, okay, voted on first. Okay, we'll vote on the in-camera item first, sorry about that. Deanna, do you wanna pull that up, please? So we will add the in-camera to thirteen D, so I'll look for, um, a vote, approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Paul Morton, seconded by, um, Councillor Larry Pinch. Do you wanna put that to a vote as well? Clerk Snare, please. Motion passed. Is there any questions on the dashboard, um, items that have been submitted?
Through you, Chair, there was just one that's been on there for a while, um, for the municipal complex. And I just thought where we're coming up to budgets or whatever stuff to look at a rough class D estimate for a new build for the complex. And then, uh, there's also one for staff to bring back a report on costing for the asbestos abutment. I'm just curious where those are.
With all our, we have Acting CAO, Kio here. Um, maybe the mayor may have something on that.
Yeah, I've been speaking to CAO on that and I, I believe he was to bring back something in the very near future on trying to bring it to resolution with, with information to council, so.
Okay. No other questions on the dashboard? Okay, looking for anyone with to click, declare conflict of interest this evening. Seeing none. We'll go on to announcements. Uh, West Hans Regional Municipality is in McMackee, the ancestral ancestral and unceded territory of the McMack people. This land is governed by the treaties of peace and friendship signed in seventeen twenty-six. West Hans Regional Municipality recognizes we are all treaty people and have responsibility to this land and each other. West Hans Regional Municipality also recognizes African Nova Scotians are a distinct people whose history, legacies, and contributions have enriched that part of McMackee known as Nova Scotia for over four hundred years. As well, just this council and I as Chair are committed to ensuring this meeting and its participants conduct themselves in a respectful and professional manner as outlined in the municipality's municipal code of conduct. Meeting presenters, staff, and the public are expected to conduct themselves in an equally respectful manner at all times the meeting is being conducted. I thank you all in advance for your commitment to these important meeting principles. Is there any other Mayor Zabian?
Yep, uh, if I may, Chair, uh, just the, the, uh, Canadian National Broom Ball Championships, uh, kicked off today, you'll see multiple, uh, uh, vehicles at the sports complex, uh, so get out, get some games in, uh, it's, it's, it's fun competition and they're, they're great people, uh. The, I think thirty-six teams, seven hundred athletes. It's quite large and, uh, in association with that, they, uh, had their, uh, Hall of Fame inductees last night in Brooklyn and, uh, I believe, uh, one of the inductees was a West Hanser, Adam Sexton. So, uh, congratulations to Adam, uh, true broom ball individual inside and out. And, uh, he was pretty proud last night to be inducted, so, uh, it's a great, great day for him.
Yeah, congratulations to Adam, he's been involved for many, many years, so that's great. Um, Councillor Scott McLean?
Yeah, I just wanna put it out there, uh, I had the, uh, pleasure to attend the, uh, Rivers River View Skating Club, uh, grand finale, uh, the Disney Stairs, uh, last, uh, Friday evening at six o'clock at the Brooklyn, uh, rink and what a, what an exciting time. And they've, I just wanna throw a big shout out to all the volunteers, the coaches, young and old, and all the parents that put that together, because it took a lot of work and it was very well received.
Great. Councillor Remy.
Uh, just a quick little note that Sweets Corner Hall is holding a Easter egg hunt this weekend on Saturday from ten till noon.
Okay, that's a great, Councillor, um, Paul Wheaton, sorry.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, just wanted to, uh, let everybody know that this weekend, there's an auction at the Ardois Hall. It's in support of Ardois Mechanical and if anyone wants to go, it's a two-day event. You can do your pre-sale viewing on Saturday and Sunday, although you don't have to be there on Sunday, you can make your bid at any time. So that's this weekend at Ardois Mechanical, uh, fundraiser. And also the Ellis House Breakfast that we had March twenty-ninth for, uh, support of the Scott family. Happy to know that we raised eighteen hundred dollars for them, so thanks to everybody that attended.
Job well done. Uh, Councillor McLean, did you have anything else?
No, sorry.
And, and Councillor Remy, can you just put your mic up? I can't see with the lap, perfect, thank you, I don't wanna miss anyone. Councillor Larry Pinch.
So I just wanted to mention, uh, that the Southwest Hans Fire Breakfast resume this Saturday from eight to ten AM for the season. So looking forward to a, a good crowd and the beans are the best.
Perfect, that's great, great announcements, anything else? Seeing none, we'll move along, approve of the previous meeting minutes, twenty twenty-five oh three eleven, Committee of the Whole minutes.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Larry Pinch.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Bonnie Smith. No questions? Clerk Snare, can we put that up to a vote, please? Motion passed, thank you everyone. Moving right along, we have one presentation tonight, it's Station Food Hub, so I would like to invite Rebecca up. Hi Rebecca, so you can turn the mic on and if your presentation, I think Deanna's gonna work for us.
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay. So I checked, um, the last time that Heather and I were here was April tenth, twenty nineteen, so almost exactly six years ago. So there's been a lot of changes, a lot of things have happened. Um, Heather left the company in January of this year, so she's moved on to different things. So it's just myself and our seven staff that we have up there, but there's a presentation, I can, we can get that started, there's a quick little video that I wanted to show everyone first and then we can get into the presentation. And thank you, um, Councillor Francis, I guess, to, um, invite me here tonight to speak.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Thanks Rebecca. Just having a little bit of technical difficulty to get this up and running, but we'll be there. Nope, that's fine, we're there now.
Okay, so this is just a quick little video and then. There may not be sound, I don't know. Pardon? If there's no sound, then we don't need to watch it.
Maybe we can share that later to our.
Yeah.
Site or something, okay?
So we are part of the Nova Scotia Royal Program, so it's a new program, provincially, um.
Oh, here we go, there it is. Sorry.
That was my sound though.
Oh.
Well, maybe we can just share that, um, later.
Yeah, it is in the package.
Yeah.
That we received on the agenda, so we can watch.
Yeah. And really, it's just a, it's a nice little video that was done on our company to talk about the new product that we have, um, the chow. So the green tomato chow is on the table over there, so everybody can, um, I don't have enough for everybody, but there's some there that you can take home if you wanna try some, so maybe go back to the presentation and then.
It's great when it works, but when it doesn't work, it's not, not fun. Yes, we're just gonna have some commercial breaks until we get to the presentation, so.
Sorry.
No, that's not a problem, we, uh, we will get there, we apologize to you.
It doesn't matter. Okay. There's no more videos, so.
There we go. We're all set.
So from the beginning, our vision when we took over, well, we bought the Newport Station Elementary School and Mr. Wheaton here, he's, um, he's a great help in the summertime to keep us looking nice and fancy, so thank you, Paul. Um, our vision is to be the connector of farms, food, and people. So we work with a number of local farms and out to the valley and we purchase product from them. We bring it to the station where we process it, we value add it, and we make usable products, which we now sell to Nova Scotia Health through Cisco, GFS, we sell directly to Noggin Stores and we're pitching to SoBees and Loblaw's later this month and we are, um, gonna be attending a big trade show in Toronto where we hope to get more customers, so we can bring more Nova Scotia product throughout Canada. We also have long-term leases, so one of our visions was to be able to lease out commercial space within the building. It didn't, we haven't leased out as much as we had hoped, but we have had a number of businesses that have been leasing from us, um, over the years. And our main focus right now is on our value-added products that we, that we produce. All right. So as you can see in Nova Scotia, where we're located, we're very close to a big Annapolis Valley where a lot of the agriculture is, um, is growing and we connect into the city, so we really drive a lot of products into Halifax on a weekly basis. So currently, right now, we have a big truck, we leave Newport Station School, we head out to the valley every Tuesday, we pick up a lot of stuff, we deliver to companies out there. Then we bring it back to the hub and then on Wednesdays, we head down to the SoShore, so we hit up Lunenburg, Bridgewater, um, Hubbard's, Tantalan, Timberley, that area. Then on Thursdays, we hit all of Halifax, we go do loops in Halifax and then on Fridays, we do Dartmouth, Fall River, Sackville, Bedford. So we're really kept capturing a, quite a big area of the province with our products and we deliver for other companies as well. So that's just a slide, because I often share this similar presentation to other people who may not know where we're located, but I think we're pretty central to, um, a great spot in Nova Scotia. And again, our, our vision is to be that connector, we do a lot of our own marketing, the aggregation part where we have dry storage, cold storage, freezer storage, uh, onsite, which we also rent out to some of the smaller farmers in the area who might need that off, like on-season storage for their meat or some of their vegetables and processing, things like that. And then we are distributor. Next slide. So that's just the back end of the school, so we have large freezers attached to the building. We've recently purchased a large twenty-foot blast freezer, so we don't, we can't, we don't have an IQF tunnel, but we can do really quick freezing of products, um, down in the blast freezer that's not located in this photo. And then we just have the dairy farmer's truck that we use as a fridge over the summer. So these are, this is the old picture of the old school, um, not much has changed in the hallway, but we've redone a lot of work in all the classrooms. So again, I invite every, anybody who wants to come up for a tour, happy to take you on one. We've now have, the whole primary end of the school has been converted into a processing space, so we have five kitchens right now and we do, um, mashed potatoes, mashed sweet potato, mashed turnip, carrots and onion in this side of the building and then we do our chow, our preserves and our apples in another, uh, kitchen. Uh, we're third-party audit it, so we're able to sell all across Canada and export out of the country. And we also have our HACCP certification and, um, we have a really strong food safety culture within the business. And, uh, we've hired a third-party auditor to come in monthly and do all of our testing and listeria testing and making sure that we are, we always uphold the highest safety for our customers. This is just a receiving bay with our potatoes, so we, um, purchase potatoes from, um, Mike and Art Woolover at the Basinview Farms. Um, and so we just, just a cute picture of their potatoes coming in. So that's kind of what a typical day on the raw side looks like, um. We are currently hiring, so if anybody knows of anybody who would love to work in this space peeling potatoes all day long, um, we have an active job posting out right now for somebody to come in this space. This is, that's a, our new blast freezer on the right-hand side and then the left-hand side is just a rational oven. Our company in two thousand and twenty-three was nominated and we, well, we set up for a food waste reduction challenge. And so our business model was recognized as one of the top ten in Canada, uh, only two in Atlantic Canada that, um, and received a quite, uh, hefty prize money and that's how we were able to fund our equipment and a lot of the up, um, upgrades to our kitchen was through that, uh, challenge for food waste reduction. So this is our new product, it's a green tomato chow-chow, habitat, stop making, um, tomato chow. So there's a huge gap in the marketplace and, uh, we jumped in last summer and started making chow and now our product is sold through GFS and Cisco and we're pitching this one, this is the product we're pitching, this, um, coming trade show up in Ontario. Um, right now, we are buying our tomatoes from PEI, because there's none in Nova Scotia, but as soon as they become available, we'll be using, using Nova Scotia tomatoes. Within the food hub, we have a, a not-for-profit, it's called the Station Learning Farm. We have a coordinator and we have a board of directors and some volunteers that work at the Station Learning Farm. Um, that operates a program called with Meals to Heal. I'm not sure if Marion's been here or if you've, anyone's heard about Meals to Heal program. They make medically tailored meals to people who are leaving hospitals. So if you're discharged from hospital and you need to, um, have support with your meals, Meals to Heals, um, there's a referral process and they make, um, the meal, well, we make the meals for their program and they're heart-healthy, diabetic-friendly, we're working right now on a potential kidney-friendly meal and those people would get, um, six meals frozen that they can have, um, to make sure that their recovery from hospital is better. And so that program operates, um, within the station at the Learning Farm. And more recently, Valley After the Bell has opened the West Hans branch, I guess they're calling them, um, and they work at the station as well. So they pack after, they pack snacks and things like that that go into kids' backpacks and then they get, um, delivered to the schools on Friday and then the students who may have food insecurity or need support over the weekend, they get to take their meals home with them, uh, and that program also operates at the station. So some really great, um, programs that are operating, um, through the Learning Farm. And that idea for that program is to continue to run, work with more community organizations and have more community, um, involvement through the Learning Farm at the station, so, um, I'm open for suggestions or if people know of community groups in the, um, municipality that are looking for a space or to partner with, uh, organization that deals with food, to please contact us. So I didn't go lots over my fifteen minutes, I'm really short, but I just, that was kind of a brief update on, um, what we're doing up there. And if anyone has questions, I'd be open to answering them.
Thank you very much Rebecca, very informative and I can't believe when you said it was twenty nineteen, because I remember six years ago when we first walked in, I think the mayor and I came out to visit and you've done an amazing job and the growth that I see from the times I do drop in is, is amazing, so. I will open it up to council if anyone has any questions for Rebecca. Councillor Larry Pinch.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
Um, we were up there with the Beavers for a tour through the Station Food Hub. Yeah, and they got to see how the potatoes were processed, uh, it was really nice. So I think it's a really nice gesture that you have it open to community so that they can kind of come see where the food is coming from and how it gets to your table, I think it was a really good learning experience for.
Yeah, oh, awesome, yeah, Justin's our production manager and he is, he is part of the Beavers, he brings them up. Um, we also work with the Edge Program in town and we also work with the adult high school, so WEC comes over, uh, once, like, every three weeks and they have experiential learning and their service learning is done at the station as well, so. I didn't mention them in the talk, but we do lots of, love that kind of stuff.
Very good. Councillor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
You made, uh, reference to, uh, spaced elise, uh, that you were, so what kind of space is it? Is it kitchen space, is it general space, or can you just touch on that?
Yeah, they're, they're the, the empty classrooms, ideally, we're looking for long-term commercial leasers and they're six hundred and fifty square foot classrooms. Um, if you were wanting to set up a kitchen in there, for example, we would have access to water and sewage and plumbing and all of that, but you'd have to do your full kitchen setup. Yeah.
So, so food-based.
Food-based, but we also have some non-food-based, we have some just, we have a person who's renting it right now for storage, we have a guy who does his cabinet making in the back, so we, so they're open to, to.
Alternative uses, it's, it's, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Zabian?
Yeah, uh, great presentation Rebecca, it's, it's come a long way from the days of hydroponics or aquaponics, I don't know what they called anymore to, to what you're using the building for now. I had a meeting with, uh, Capital Health, uh, Health and Wellness Team, uh, with, uh, shared priorities and food insecurity was one of them, so I, I passed your contact along to them.
Oh, great.
Just, uh, there's some synergies that maybe you can help them out with.
Thank you.
Programs for schools or things that they're starting to get into or starting to look into, so, uh.
That's great. We just started doing some school lunch programs, so with the new investment from the province and from the federal government, that is something that we're really actively getting into, so in the next three months or so, we're buying a, well, we've already bought it, it's getting delivered. It's a full apple processing line, so we'll be able to process and wedge and deliver bulk apple, apples to the hea- health authority and to schools for their lunch and breakfast programs. So that'll be online probably in the next six months or so. Yep.
That's great, any other questions? If not, thank you so much for coming in and maybe not do it again in six years, maybe we'll do it sooner, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Nice.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, council, we'll move right along, unfinished business, postpone motions, uh, eight A Bear Lake Wind Farm Liaison Committee Recommendation Report. Councillor Larry Pinch.
So I know that this was in our package and we had all seen the correspondence, uh, that was, uh, put through on the previous agenda. Um, it was a request, uh, from Bear Lake Wind Farm for their community liaison committee, uh, for a councillor to sit, uh, on that committee. So I just wanted to bring it back to council, um, hoping that we can move forwards with that motion so that we can have a, um, a councillor appointed to the CLC for Bear Lake Wind.
Thank you, Councillor Larry Pinch, is there any questions to Councillor Larry Pinch? If not, there is a motion, there are actually two motions. And. Councillor Wheaton?
Uh, council appoints a member of, uh, West Hans Regional Municipality Council to be a representative and participate in the Bear Lake Wind Project Community Liaison Committee for the proposed renewable energy development.
Made by Councillor Wheaton, is there a second or?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Bonnie Smith, any questions on the motion? If not, I'll reread it. Um, the Committee of the Whole recommends council appoints a member of West Hans Regional Municipality Council to be a representative and participate in the Bear Lake Wind Project Community Liaison Committee, CLC for their proposed renewable energy development. We'll put that to a vote, Clerk Snare? Motion passed, thank you, there's a second part to, um, that, Councillor Wheaton?
The council directs the CAO to engage staff to make the necessary changes to the meeting and committee procedural policy, RCOGE dash zero zero three dot zero zero, to include an appendix identifying the Bear Lake Wind Project Community Liaison Committee and include a terms of reference as set out by the committee.
Made by Councillor Wheaton, is there a second or?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Bonnie Smith. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, so call for the question, so council directs the CAO to engage staff to make the necessary changes to the meeting and committee procedural policy, RCOGE dash zero zero three dot zero zero, to include an appendix identifying the Bear Lake Wind Project Community Liaison Committee and include a terms of reference as set out by the committee. We'll put that to a vote, please. Motion passed, thank you, everybody. And as it was showed, we on the agenda, we're gonna go right to HC.
Excuse me Deputy Mayor, is council going to appoint? Uh, councillors?
We will do that at council.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to HC. Acting Director, Acting CAO.
Thank you, uh, before you, uh, we have the, uh, Grants and Contributions Policy, um, and Recommended Changes. Be considered an effort to achieve a fair process for all organizations, uh, which are noted in the report that was circulated. And additionally, staff are further noting, um, additional changes that'll be brought forward at a later date for consideration, um. But we welcome any questions that you might have and if not, the recommendation is there before you.
Is there any questions for? Mayor Zabian?
Yep, uh, through you, Deputy Mayor, to, uh, Director Kio, Acting CAO, um, the, so the diverse and inclusive committee, that'll be the recommendations coming later on, after budget, uh,
Correct.
Or leading up into approval of grants.
Of the twen- no, it'll be in advance of the twenty twenty-six grant, um, process. So for this year, um, the process will be as it is and denoted in this, with the amended, um, amendments.
Absolutely, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair, uh, so a question around the, um, the recommendation that might be coming in the fall. It's for small business to make their businesses more accessible. Would that be a separate funding stream than the one that's for the volunteer agencies or would, would it all be amalgamated into one eventually?
That will be a decision that we will bring forward, um, and that's, that's part of the reason why the recommendation isn't included in this is because staff haven't had the time to really look at it and make an, you know, informed decision as to what the best path forward would be, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Seeing no other lights, council, there is a recommendation. Uh, Mayor Zabian?
I'll make a chair if I may, uh, the Committee of the Whole recommend that council adopt the amended West Hans Regional Municipality Grants and Contributions Policy.
Made by Mayor Zabian, is there a second or seconded by Councillor Smith? Any questions on the motion? Okay, we'll put it to a vote, so the recommendation is Committee of the Whole recommend that council adopt the amended West Hans Regional Municipality Grants and Contributions Policy. Clerk Snare, well. Motion passed, thank you, everyone, and we're gonna move right along to eight D Rising Tide Shore Signage Recommendation Report and Manager Roberts is gonna speak on this.
Good evening, council, before you is a recommendation report to advance the Rising Tides Shore signage project. Um, and it would be in conjunction with the Municipality of East Hans. Um, the idea of promoting. Um, the idea of promoting the Hans Shore started long before we consolidated. Um, and in 2019, both, uh, East Hans, well, the former District of West Hans and the former town of Windsor, we all worked together with Tourism Nova Scotia and created a video that started in Maitland and went along the Hans Shore and came down into Windsor. It was agreed then that we really needed to do a unified signage project. And then in 2023, East Hans and West Hans staff got together and we started talking about, you know, this unified project. And anyhow, uh, both municipal units, uh, have allocated funds in 2024, 2025 capital budget. Uh, we put money into a reserve from our operating reserves to this project. Attached to the report is the draft of the Rising Tide Signage Manual. It was pre- prepared by East Hans. And certainly our staff here have reviewed it and support it. And, uh, the manual introduces both the design and branding. And the design actually will incorporate the West Hans brand, um, as we, when we're into the West Hans region. So it's a three-phase approach. Um, phases one and two will definitely need to have, uh, provincial approvals. Phase one would be for the highway signage on our hundred series highways. Phase two is the signage that would be at the key intersections such as Brooklyn and Newport directing people down the two fifteen. And phase three would actually look at individual key attractions. And so, uh, before you is a, a recommendation and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Roberts. So is there any questions? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair, through to, um, Manager Roberts. Is there any way we can incorporate, um, business advertisement? Like on that route?
That'll be phase three.
Okay, that's phase three. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor John Smith?
Yep, thank you, Chair. So does this include pedestrian signage for, um, like the towns and communities?
I can't really, so through our branding, uh, through our beautification plan, we also have signage in there for communities and stuff. So I think it'll be a layering as we move forward in this project together.
So some of the, some of the signage for the, like, um, local attractions would have the same branding as the ones for the, for the highways, like say for the two fifteen?
So there'll be, through you, Chair, there will be like a brand for the, the rising tides. And so then once like at Walton would be, so the color schemes will change. But we have not, and so there will be attraction signage and things like business signage. But I can't actually say what the community sign will look like. Cause we'll have to, I think, marry up how our brand, our beautification plan is going to factor into all of this. We still have a lot of work to do. It's, it's just a draft at this point in time and we need council support that to move forward with this.
Okay, thanks very much.
Counselor Remy?
Mine is more of a comment than a question, so forgive me, but I was just really, really excited when I saw this. Because, um, I worked with Vanessa with East Dance on this. So I was just really, really excited to see it come forward and love the branding aspect of it.
Perfect. Counselor Larry Pinch?
I'm ready to make the recommendation if there's no further discussion.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Just, thank you very much. Just a question through to Vanessa. Thanks for the, uh, for the update on this Vanessa. So, uh, so this was pre-approved. So we're doing a carry forward on the budget, uh, that was allocated. Um, is it anticipated there's more budgetary expense in the, in the ensuing year or two? That this grows out or is this kind of the extent of it with the signage and?
Uh, through you, Chair, to Counselor Ivy, I really can't answer that. Um, East Hans has put a hundred thousand dollars into the budget for this project. We've allocated fifty. And so obviously they have a larger area and they really want to promote things like burnt coat. Um, so I, I really don't know how that is all gonna play out. I, they talked about thirty thousand, um, for phase one, which would be the, um, like blades underneath our new, uh, community identity signs. So anyhow, how many of those we actually each put owed will have an impact. So on, on the bottom line.
Sure. Thank you. So there could be an open door that it may come back and, um, thank you. Um, and then the one.
I'll, I'll happily spend your money.
I was afraid that would be the reply. Um, but truly in supportive doing the, the marketing for the area. I think it's a great thing. The one thing I wasn't clear on, uh, had to do with, uh, there's the reference in here to the colors for East Hans and then when West Hans is West Hans colors. But will that also be overlaid like on a West Hans? When you're talking about community signage, that would actually be the blade appearing on a, on a West Hans sign within the region? Or is it strictly East Hans?
And again, through you, Chair, to Counselor Ivy, um, how that's all really gonna look? I, I mean, I personally believe that our community signs will have the West Hans brand on them. But then as we go into, but beside that, maybe a Rising Tide Shore sign. And that will be our brand, um, much like when you drive along and you'll see, you know, that you're on the Evangeline Trail and, and those types of things.
Great. Thank you very much.
You? Any other questions? Thank you, Manager Roberts, for the presentation. And we'll go Counselor Larry Pinch. You want to make that motion?
That committee of the whole recommends that council supports the advancement of the Rising Tide Shore signage project with the municipality of East Hans to develop signage along Highway two fifteen to enhance the visitor experience, support economic development and increase wayfinding.
Made by Counselor Larry Pinch. Is there? Seconded by Counselor Paul Morton. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, question and I'll reread it that we're voting that council supports the advancement of the Rising Tide Shore signage project with the municipality of East Hans to develop signage along Highway two fifteen to enhance the visitor experience, support economic development, increase wayfinding. Clerksnare will put that. Oh, you're ahead of me. Moving right along here. Motion pass. Thank you, everyone. So we're gonna move down to nine reports. Nine A is CAO Activity Update Information Report. And we will go to Acting CAO Kio to see if you have anything or.
There was no, yeah, there was no report, Chair.
Okay, so we will move right along to Dangerous or Unsightly Report for September first, twenty twenty four, March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Acting CAO Kio.
Um, before you is the, uh, information report circulated, um, by Ryan Parker, the bylaw enforcement officer. Um, and the information is contained within for.
Right. Is there any questions on any of that? It's pretty straightforward. Seeing none, we're gonna move right along to ten correspondence. And, uh, I'll go through these two at a time since there's only four. So correspondence information, correspondence received ledger as of April fourth, twenty twenty five. One, community letters requesting a community center, forty-four total. Two, Tim Carr, we support for Avon River Day Society Funding. Seeing nothing there. I will move on to three, Pat Taylor, re-fireworks regulations. Four, Marcus Keel, regarding file number twenty four dash oh three, development agreement Bear Lake Wind Farm process. Any questions there? Uh, Mayor Zabian?
Nothing on the, the correspondence here, but I just forgot to mention that I gotta step out here in a couple of minutes to go to the opening ceremonies for broomball. So just, uh, just I'll be about ten minutes out of the room.
Sounds good. Okay. Uh, Counselor John Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Uh, regarding, uh, the letter from Pat Taylor, I just wanted to mention that I, I did speak with Pat Taylor and, um, he reiterated the problem that he had with fireworks in his neighborhood this past January. And what he said was that the fireworks were very close to his house and that, um, there didn't seem to be any rhyme or reason for setting him off at that time and, and that close to his, his residence and, and in his neighborhood. So, um, it does seem like that we do have a problem with fireworks. I'm not sure if it's a municipal issue or municipality can actually solve the problem. Um, he did elaborate that. PEI has banned fireworks and regulated them. Um, so perhaps down the road, that's something I'll bring to council. Just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Smith. Anything else on the correspondence? Uh, Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and, uh, appreciate the comments shared by, uh, Counselor Smith on this and others that have, uh, written and or called in uh, different times over the years. And I know we still have, uh, a noise by law, peace and good order by law that's in the works for being reviewed and brought back. Which I think when we talked about that three years ago, there may have been a reference that perhaps fireworks, uh, may end up being a part of that. And it's, I think it's safe to say that, um, well, it's not safe to say actually that, uh, we're aware of New Year's Eve fireworks and July first and other special events when fireworks may go off. Um, and many people are able to plan or take that into account in some fashion because of the expectation on an annual basis. The big part of it is when they're going off randomly at a time of the year, when they're not expected, I think, uh, is, is one aspect of it. And Counselor Smith's comments, uh, I'm not sure that it's provincial or as much as we might have the ability to look at it from a local bylaw standpoint. But some areas do put in requirements for either a registration or a permit, let us set them off, or you could have requirements like we do with public information meetings. Uh, where you have a requirement to let people know within a certain perimeter that you're gonna be setting off fireworks. So the responsibility is with the individual that's doing it versus people finding out because they have, um, you know, livestock or animals and pets are being affected. So I think it is something worth taking a look at at some point in time. Um, just not to lose sight of it, uh, because it is, they are so prevalent, but, uh, but times have changed. And it may be time for us to look at that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Larry Pinch?
Um, just in regards to that correspondence, I did want to note it was New Year's Eve when that fireworks display. So just because Counselor Ivy had suggested that we should have an expectation perhaps that on particular times of the year or holidays that those things may occur. Um, but I do agree that it might be a good idea, um, to require that residents notify their neighbors, um, prior to having displays of that nature. Um, just because it would give them a heads up. I do know, uh, out in our district, there are a fair amount of fireworks at this particular time of year. Um, but, uh, residents are relatively diligent at notifying others that those are going to be occurring from a certain point forward. So maybe it's even looks like the municipality putting out a social media message on Facebook that's like reminder, it's New Year's Eve. So from, you know, dusk till a particular period of time, the likelihood that we could have fireworks. So just to help people, um, keep their animals safe. I know that there are people on both sides of that coin, those who really appreciate the fireworks displays and, and those who don't appreciate them at all. So, um, it's a tricky situation.
For sure. Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to comment on that correspondence too. Uh, I was CC'd on that. Uh, Mr. Taylor used to live in my district not that long ago. So, uh, I just want to throw a few things out there that I've noticed in my district with fireworks. You know, family pets, uh, uh, taking off and not coming back, uh, cattle, horses running through fences, uh, and, uh, uh, military veterans, um, it triggers PTSD. I've heard that numerous times and never even thought of that. So it, it is an issue. Just want to throw it out there. Something to look at down the road. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, we're gonna move on to ten B, outgoing correspondence ledger as of April fourth, twenty twenty five. Uh, West Hans Regional Municipality signed letter of support for Annapolis Valley Regional Library and West Hans Regional Municipality follow-up letter to the province refinancing support to fund a residential property bio program. Anything on those? Seeing none, we're gonna move right along to eleven, new business. A Hansport Main Street Renewal Tender Award, WHRMPW twenty five dash oh eight, recommendation report Director Richard.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, permission to make a staff introduction? Um, I'd like to introduce, uh, Tim Boder. I think he met most of you, but, uh, Tim's our new project engineer. He's a designated civil engineer. Um, comes with valuable experience in project management, uh, through several municipalities. So, uh, very happy to have him here and to assist me with the report as needed.
Great. Welcome, Tim.
Uh, so the first one, uh, is, uh, pre, pre-tender approval for award of Han, Han, Han Sport Main Street's, uh, street and services renewal. Um, this section of, uh, Main Street and Hansport from Tannery Road to William Street, uh, was included in the, uh, twenty twenty four, twenty-five, five-year capital budget. Uh, the determination for replacement was based on the age, um, early forties, uh, the services in the street. Uh, and the condition of the underground services in the street surface condition. The design work was, uh, completed, uh, over the last year and the project was tendered in March of this year. So on March thirty first, twenty twenty five, we did receive two tenders, uh, for construction services. Uh, Dexter Construction Company was the, uh, the low bidder. They have substantial experience in this type of work and they're being recommended, uh, for award of this project. Um, so it is preapproval. So we have adjusted our capital expenditures based on the tender prices. Uh, so we're looking for a preapproval of the amount and identified in the recommendation. Happy to answer any questions with assistance from, uh, Mr. Boder.
Great. Thank you, Director Richard. Are there any questions to, uh, Director Richard? Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, through to Director Richard. Uh, it, I'm still trying to find the, the screen here, but I noticed that, uh, the other night had it written down here. Um, the, some of the funding is coming from consolidation funding, I believe?
Yeah, so it's, it's the remainder of the consolidation funding from the, uh, the previous, I think it was at the previous town in Hansport or after? Yeah, Carol, you can maybe answer that question a bit more.
Thank you, Worship. Um, so the province had given some money regarding the, following the consolidation of the Town of Windsor and the West Hans Regional Municipality. And as part of that consolidation money, we are focusing on, uh, rural projects with that funding. So this one met the criteria and this one was part of our two-year budget and, uh, was outlined in our five-year capital budget last year for consolidation funding. So.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on, or, uh, for Director Richard? Quiet bunch tonight, so. I guess you're off the hook for now. So there is a recommendation.
Prepared to make that motion. That committee of the whole recommends that council pre-approve the award of tender WHRMPW two five dash oh eight to Hansport Main Street Renewal to Dexter Construction, Construction Limited for the tendered price of two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars before applicable taxes.
Made by Counselor Larry Pinch, seconded by Counselor Paul Morton. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll put it to a vote. And committee of the whole recommends that council pre-approve the award of tender WHRMPW twenty five dash oh eight Hansport Main Street Renewal to Dexter Construction Limited for the tendered price of two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars before applicable taxes. Motion carried. There is a second motion there. If somebody would like to read that. Counselor Larry Pinch?
Committee of the whole recommends that council pre-approve a construction contingency amount of three hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars before applicable taxes.
Made by Counselor Larry Pinch, seconded by Counselor Paul Morton. Any questions on the motion? So we are voting committee of the whole recommends that council, oh, question, sorry, Counselor Ivy?
Sorry, the, uh, just let me get my voice back. Uh, the, there's two contingency numbers in the table. There's one which is the fifteen percent and the other one is a quoted number. Can we just be sure we've got the right number in the quote if we can? Project contingency is noted at three forty-nine and three thirty-six. And I'm sorry for not asking that when the director was at my last side of it.
Counselor.
If you'll allow my response, uh, through your worship to Counselor Ivy, that is outlining the net HST amount. So the contingency plus HST.
Okay, thank you.
All good? Okay. Question has been called. So committee of the whole recommends that council pre-approval, a construction contingency amount of three hundred. of $336,285 before applicable taxes. So we'll put that to a vote. Counselor Ivy?
Sorry.
No problem. Motion passed. Now we're going to move on to B Trigotha Creek Sanitary Crossing Tender Award WHRMPW25-06 recommendation report Director Richard.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is for tender award for Trigotha Creek Sanitary Crossing. This project involves the replacement of an existing suspended sanitary sewer crossing over Trigotha Creek. The existing structure and piping have reached the end of life and at risk of failure. The existing cast iron pipe with exposed joints is showing sign of deterioration and deflection. This project was approved in the 24-25 capital budget. The design work for this project was completed over the last year, and the project was tendered in March 27, 2025. We received four tender bids for this construction services, and the low compliant bidder was Dexter Construction, and their submission was fully compliant with the tender requirements. The project is over budget based on our estimated values in the 24-25 budget by $132,476.60. But the recommendation is before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Richard. Any questions for the Director? Counselor Larry Pinch.
Through you, Chair. Is there anything specific or specific reasoning why you think that that larger amount was under budgeted initially?
Certainly, it's just indicative of runaway inflation. We're seeing across all our tenders and all our bids, pricing for materials, labor costs, equipment are just, you know, going up. Tim recently did an evaluation, I think it was since five years ago, just the price per meter for a water main construction is, you know, has just gone through the roof. So it's compounded by inflation, labor, material cost, along with the fact that contractors are extremely busy.
Okay, Counselor John Smith.
Well, thank you, Chair. So what about the rest of the pipe, the piece that joins it on both ends?
Yeah, so we did a video inspection. We're not too worried about the pipe that's buried. Where this is exposed, it's exposed to the elements, the abutments, freeze thaw. It's shifting, it has two concrete abutments, so it kind of shifts the pipe. And there's a joints that is showing weakness. So that's really vulnerable. It's above a creek, so it's, the risk factor is very high, given that this is a suspended sanitary sewer pipe.
Because it's exposed. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So through you to Director Richard. So Todd, to my previous question as it relates to this. So we only show contingency here, contingency here in one way, which I believe is without HST, but I could be wrong in that, I'm not sure. But is there a reason that we're showing it in the previous document, no different capital project, with it pre-HST and one post? I don't mean this to be difficult, but.
Director Rashan?
Thank you. So through your worship to Counselor Ivy, this project is solely a sewer project, so one funding source. Whereas with the other road renewal project, you have roads, stormwater sidewalks, sewer and water. So they have multiple different funding sources. So with that contingency, it could get allocated. And that's why there's the asterisks beside it at the bottom under funding to say this will get allocated where needed. So it could be that it's allocated to water. It could be that it's allocated to sewer, depending on where the contingency needs to go. So that's why the contingency is on its own line, and we have the note there.
And so based on it, depending on where it gets allocated, just to see that I understand what you're saying correctly. In some cases, HST would apply. In other cases, HST would not. Is that correct? Or did I?
So in the beginning of the table is the project costing, which I leave the before tax amount in and show you what the net expense is. But when I'm breaking it out on funding, I have to include the net HST when I'm identifying the funding sources.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And then the one other question there, Director Richard, I believe, is that, so we're over budget on this one already by 132, but we're building a contingency of 30, 33, 34,000. Are we, okay, we're still showing a contingency that's less than what we're already over budget on, if that makes any sense?
I think we're pretty comfortable. You know, it's based on unit rates. We do have the contract bids, so it's just for those unknowns. You know, if something comes outside the scope that we didn't identify in the detailed design, just this allows us a little bit of flexibility with that contingency. So we're, we're pretty comfortable with that, bearing no major, you know, scope changes. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions for Director Richard? Seeing none, you're both off the hook. We have a motion. So Counselor Bonnie Smith.
Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the award of tender WHRMPW25-06 Trigotha Creek sanitary pipe crossing to Dexter Construction Limited for the tendered price of $212,500 before applicable taxes.
Moved by Counselor Bonnie Smith. Is there a second, seconded by Counselor Larry Pinch. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. So the recommendation is Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the award of tender WHRMPW25-06 Trigotha Creek sanitary pipe crossing to Dexter Construction Limited for the tendered price of $212,500 before applicable taxes. Motion passed. And there's a second one there. Counselor Smith?
Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve a project contingency amount of $33,375 before applicable taxes.
Made by Counselor Bonnie Smith, seconded by Counselor Larry Pinch. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. So Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve a project contingency amount of $33,375 before applicable taxes. We'll put that to a vote, Deanna. Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Well, we're moving right along. We are now into public comment period. So if anyone from the public who would like to come up and you turn the mic on, you have five minutes and state your name.
Amanda Dunfield, Windsor. Thank you, esteemed council and staff for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to continue my story about backpacks. Not going to get into backpacks. I'm just going to tell you the story. So thank you very much, Counselor Remy Wheaton, Smith, Bonnie, and Counselor Ivy for accepting my invitation to come out. I believe most of you have heard portions of this story that I'm going to tell you tonight. I think it's really important we all hear it, because there's a lot of things that occur in these events that pictures don't do it justice. And if nobody's coming to sort of follow up, nobody knows what's happening before, after, during events, per se. But I want to tell you the story about a community member who came to help that night. It was someone who had become loosely known to me through the community. He showed up because he wanted to be of assistance. And this was an individual who, it became known to me that he had been unhoused, unemployed, and he struggled with addiction prior to me knowing him. He had gone into treatment with a random testing protocol. He had secured a career, so career employment. He had medical, he had pension benefits, he had education options, and he had potential frontboard mobility in his job. He became housed. He got a car. He developed a relationship. He got a pet, and his common loss spouse was pregnant. Within days of the July 11 event, he contacted me to say, because I am a bit of a sounding block for most of the people there. So I, I speak with a lot of people. He contacted me to say that he needed someone to speak with. He had witnessed my neighbor carrying her children out through the CSO waters. He had witnessed my other neighbor fall and go under the water. He described to me that he had already experienced a previous life trauma involving danger and harm to a child. So for him, this was very distressing, because we don't know what people have in their backpacks. And it wasn't his responsibility to be there. So he explained to me that he was struggling with sleep, and I'm going to be very honest here and very forthright and say that I moved to Stanis Street in recovery for PTSD from my employment as a first responder and an emergency dispatcher. I was on the cusp of returning to work on July 27, 2021. I have an entire team of treatment providers. I'm fortunate. And I have been continuously put off to the point where I permanently lost my employment, because every time there's a flood, they say, you cannot go back to an employment such as that when you live in an emergency. It's not sustainable. I understand that, and I appreciate that. It does give me a bit of a unique perspective as to what people are dealing with, I guess, because I had already been there, done that, got the T-shirt. And, you know, I still get the T-shirt occasionally. I have many T-shirts now. But anyhow, so he, this is part of the reason he picked me. He was aware of that. I'm pretty open with that now. So he explained to me that he was struggling with sleep, anxiety, intrusive memories and emotion, and a desire to use. That was really concerning for me. So my question to him was, you know, have you booked yourself an appointment? Do you have treatment providers? Can you see someone? He said, yep, I have, and I'm supposed to go in later this week. I'm scared. That's what he said. I am scared. I don't know if I can make it. He didn't make it. In the coming days, he relapsed. His common loss spouse brought him to my house. And he was unresponsive and struggling to maintain his airway when EHS pulled in code one up the stairs. I was calling for Narcan. I was sternal. I was doing the sternal rub. You know, we were, come on, buddy, stay with us. Up the stairs, they come and off he goes. So the following day, I drove him all over Hex Creation, trying to find somebody, anybody who could take him. We did go to his treatment provider. She begged us to do something. She said, you know, this is a good guy. He's a role model. He helps others. He acts as a peer support worker. He is our star. You know, he is our success story. Within weeks, he failed a random drug test at his job. He lost his job. He lost his housing, his relationship, his car and his pet. And he was back on the streets within weeks. On the night of February 11, 2025, which was the night of CB sales presentation, I got a phone call right before arriving that he had been rushed to the hospital. I was told he was on life support. That was incorrect. I was very grateful for that. He was, however, in a medically induced coma, and he was intubated. So in the weeks that followed, we've lost track of him. We can't find him. He's out there. I want to say he isn't the only person struggling as a result of these events. I've spoken with dozens of people in the last 18 months approximately. People in our community are struggling. People in West Hans are still struggling from the 2023 floods. And our communities need appropriate pre and post-event supports. I feel like if there's a will, there's a way. These are not impossible tasks to get some supports together. They're really, really not. This is our community, you know? Trauma is the gateway drug. You know, I'm very cognizant of that with my child. I'm pretty sure most of the people in my community will say the same. You know, I know I need to get my child out of there. My child will be one of those children wandering the community. You know, I'm terrified for what, if we continue to stay in West Hans, what that will mean for her. I do want to point out in the flood zone community, we have individuals who are mobility impaired, hearing impaired, vision impaired. We have single parents. We have many senior members of society. We have children with autism. We have single parents with autistic children. In these events, we're all there struggling on our own. Something as simple as a community check-in program, hey, you okay? You know, we try to check on each other, but we also have things to do. And there are some who just don't have close community connections, or perhaps their neighbors aren't as checking any, or their neighbors are away. But surely there must be some way, you know, to have a, whether it be staff, volunteer. I realize staff often have a lot on the go if they're directly involved. But some type of check-in program to make sure that people are okay. Ways to figure out, you know, there are flood response teams in communities. There are loaded and stocked trailers with things like pumps and sandbags and hand sanitizers and, you know. There is so much work that could be done, realizing we're talking two decades. There's so much work we could be doing that would just make it a little easier for people there to survive. So thank you for letting me speak. I was very proud of my community. I've come and gone throughout the years, and I think there is a ton of potential here. But I always leave disappointed. I don't think, when I think of his story and I think of the stories of other people, I'm not sure we have a lot to be proud of. I really don't, because we do a lot of great things, but there's just some very key fundamental things. You know, food, housing, safety. Those are, those are the biggies. You know, after that, the other things don't really matter. If you don't have those basics, the other things are important. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Good luck.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Seeing no one, we will move on. So 13 in camera, so I'm looking for a motion to go in camera.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Paul Morton, seconded by Counselor Larry Pinch. All those in favor? Do you just want to do a sign by hands? Okay, we will go in camera. Thank you, folks. If there's any motions coming back out of camera, we will be back live. If not, have a good evening, and there'll be counsel in two weeks' time, so April 22. two weeks' time, so April 22.